I'd like to call the September 2nd morning session of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Welcome all of you this, it seems like a Monday morning, but it's really a Tuesday. Didn't seem like it on my end this morning, but welcome y'all and also the welcome those who are watching on the live stream. Thank you for tuning in. As is customary for us, we will open with invocation. I've asked Commissioner Godwin to lead us in invocation. And this morning, we had the pledge will be led by BFW Post 5886 out of Smithfield. So if you choose to rise for the invocation, please do so now.
Let's pray. Father God, we, for your love, for your patience, for your guidance, we give you thanks. We're thankful for the blessings of this day, for the opportunity to be here in Johnston County, going about the county's business. We ask your blessings on the assembly here, everybody here in attendance. We ask your blessing on all of our county. And as we deliberate on these issues, we ask for guidance and wisdom and courage to make decisions for our county. Forgive us of our shortcomings. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
He tell the ten, huh? And salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, two.
Gentlemen, as you leave, I did want to announce that I was recently at the Airborne Museum, Special Operations Museum Anniversary Celebration they had, and they recognized our Colonel Baker here. I was proud to be with him down there. Thanks for all you do, Colonel.
Absolutely.
He was also presented with one of our challenge coins from the county.
Fantastic. All right, first item up on the agenda is approval of today's, or this morning's agenda. Any items on there that we need to add or remove, or if not, entertain a motion to approve?
Uh...
I think that's, you're looking for the consent?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get that one.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion?
Move the agenda be approved?
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda's approved. Next, we have the consent agenda. These are items that are routine, and is there any item on here that we need to consider at a later date or have removed for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we delay the appointment on the planning board position. We've only got one applicant to come in on that, and given the gravity of that, of the board's decision, I think that we'll need the opportunity to see if we can generate more interest.
I'll second that motion.
All right. So, any other discussion? And I would guess we would do that at the next, extend it one month. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Could we also include a waiver on a length of service policy?
Okay. Commissioner Stovall, for the livestock arena, would you also include a waiver for the length of service on that one for?
Yes, I'd like to add to my motion that we include a waiver length of service policy for the livestock area management board position.
Okay. All right, so we have two adjustments to the agenda. One is postponement for the next month on its received modifications, and the other is for a waiver of length of service for the livestock arena. With that motion and second, all those in favor with the changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. And let me take a, I usually read those, so let me go through real quick. There's seven of them. Approval of the minutes from August 4th, the morning and afternoon session. There's some additions to the DOT system, proclamation of the 2025 Fall Litter Sweep, which is September the 13th through the 27th, appointment to the pine level planning board, and we have some budget revisions for the Sheriff's Office and Health Department. We do have some appointments for other boards, the Health Authority Board. We have Brad Oaks, and this is kind of a two-parter. We submit it to the board, the Johnston County Hospital Authority, let me get that right there for a second, and they will return it to us and see if they agree, and then we will approve that. And then we do have the livestock arena with Otis Bird as the appointment there. We also have our tax releases and refunds for July 16th through August the 15th. So those were the items on there. Now-
Hospital Authority will meet on the 10th.
Okay.
So we'll deal with that.
Okay. This brings us to the public comment portion. First up, we have our Human Resources Director, Paulette Williams here to recognize some who are retiring. Good morning, Paulette.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Today, I'm just here to announce we had one retiree for September 1st, 2025. That's Ms. Beverly Herring with our 911 Communications Department. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here today, but still wanted to recognize her achievement with Johnston County, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have our traditional public comment. And again, these are opportunities to speak on items that are not on the agenda. So these are items that are not on the agenda. If you come forward, please state your name and your town or township that you're from. And I would say, in order to keep things balanced, if there's more than one wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, that we may need to keep that to a limited number, and also ask that you maintain proper decorum and speak in a civil manner to the board. It's also an opportunity for the board to listen. It's not a time for comment or exchange of comments and discussion. With that, I will call on anyone wishing to speak. Please come forward. All right. Madam Flirt, any emails for public comment? All right. All right, next we have a series of three, I think, resolutions. The first is emergency services, and Travis Johnson is here to lead us in that. And I've asked Vice Chairman Harris to read the resolution for us.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board this morning. As I request your consideration for the proposed resolution. As you're well aware, the tax, anniversary of the tax on American soil of September 11th, 2001, is approaching next week. In May of 2011, the North Carolina General Assembly adopted a resolution honoring firefighters of our state proclaiming the week containing September 11th as Firefighters Week in North Carolina. This year marks the 24th anniversary of that incredibly tragic day. To honor those who have served and continue to serve as firefighters in Johnston County, emergency services respectfully request the board proclaim September 7th through the 13th, 2025, as Firefighters Week in Johnston County. A draft resolution is attached for your consideration. And also, thank you for your time and consideration and continued support of all emergency and public service safety personnel who serve Johnston County and its citizens. The ongoing support continues to make a positive impact across our county with the formation of the Johnston County Fire Commission and several active working committees focusing on budget submissions, apparatus replacements, staffing needs, and more. We're making significant strides, and we're continuing, we're also currently in the process of collecting data as part of a fire station study to ensure that the needs of our citizens are met in equitable and timely manner. Again, thank you for your support as we work to provide the highest quality of fire and rescue services to the citizens of Johnston County.
Fantastic. Thank you, Vice Chairman Harris. The resolution proclaiming Firefighters Week in Johnston County, whereas firefighting, let me start again, whereas fighting fires is one of the most hazardous professions, requiring physical strength, stamina, extensive training, courage, and selfless concern for the welfare of others, and whereas firefighters provide valuable services to the citizens of Johnston County, their communities, and the county, and whereas firefighters make sacrifices to protect the lives and financial interests of the citizens of Johnston County, and whereas firefighters respond to emergencies without hesitation when the call of duty arises, whereas firefighters work with public safety officials and law enforcement officers to protect the integrity of crime scenes, which is necessary to resolve arson cases, and whereas firefighters reside in the community in which they serve and have a great appreciation for protecting their communities, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the duties and services that firefighters perform by observing Firefighters Week in Johnston County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Johnston County Board of Commissioners that all firefighters deserve to be honored for the invaluable service they provide to the county, its citizens, and communities. The Board of Commissioners encourages the citizens of Johnston County to observe the week of September 8th through the 12th, 2025, as Firefighters Week in Johnston County, adopted this second day of September, 2025. And I'll enter that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment I'd like to add, just to emphasize the physical risk that these first responders are posed to. It was reported in the news that there was a shooting of a firefighter in Richmond County this weekend that was responding to a fire, and said somebody opened fire on them, and he was hit in the leg. So that's relatively new, having a firefighter being shot at, but it's certainly a risk there because you've got a lot of people out there that have immoral motives and otherwise. But I think we need to all keep in mind that there's inherent risk and danger in these public safety positions. And we appreciate the folks that are willing to put themselves out there and perform these vital functions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, I will add also that we are blessed in this county to have some very dedicated and fantastic fire personnel, both men and women, that really answer the calls. And you know, to Mr. Stovall's point, you never know when the alarm goes off what you're walking into, and you don't know how bad it's going to be, you don't know what kind of chemicals you're dealing with, you don't know what kind of hostile situation you're walking into. And so I speak passionately about this because I lived that life for about 30 years, and I was very blessed to have a great group of people to work with, and I still am today with the firefighters of this county. I rest easy at night knowing that you're on the job and that all the folks around the county are taking care of the citizens of this county. We're very fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was in my mid-20s when this, the September 11th attacks, and it made a lasting impact on me, and there's been a lot of firefighters stepped up since then to serve, and it's important that we continue this legacy and remember. But the things we deal with every day are changing, and we have to adapt to change, but we appreciate the Commissioner's support helping us do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I will, just while I have the chance, Commissioner Godwin mentioned the challenge coin, and on the back of that are four words that we selected that represent the employees of Johnston County and really the folks of Johnston County. But they are empowering, compassionate, responsive, and visionary. And I think with some of the things that we were able to see last week at the Association of County Commissioners, there are a lot of counties out there looking at what we're doing in our fire services. So again, four words that apply to firefighters and also the next one in our emergency services. So with that, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is adopted. Next up is proclamation for Johnston County Preparedness Month, and we have Josh Holloman here to speak to us. You got the double names down here, so I'll make sure they got it right. So I've asked Commissioner Rose to read us that resolution, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, and good morning, Commissioners. I'm here this morning representing our Emergency Management Division. Also have a couple members from our Emergency Management Team. I have Ms. Brenda Allen and Tanner Holland, if you don't mind standing up, and just being recognized. Appreciate them joining me. September is recognized as Preparedness Month, and so that's why we're here today to proclaim September as Preparedness Month in Johnston County. Our Emergency Management, our Emergency Services Department is prepared, but this is where we're encouraging our citizens to be prepared as well. That individual preparedness goes a long way with having a plan and making sure our families are ready for those emergencies and disasters that we know we're prone to. We're right in the peak of hurricane season, but we know that's just one of the things that we may face. So we appreciate the consideration of this, and we do encourage all of our citizens to be prepared.
All right. Thank you. Any comments? All right, Commissioner Rose?
Whereas all North Carolinians should be prepared for natural and man-made disasters as well as disease outbreaks, and whereas North Carolina is traditionally an active state for tornadoes and severe thunderstorms, with tornado touchdowns and straight-line winds causing severe damage in parts of the state this year, and whereas in 2024, the state experienced 37 tornado touchdowns, 432 flood incidents, and 755 severe thunderstorms with damaging wind and hail, and whereas last year, the National Weather Service in North Carolina issued 181 tornado warnings, 641 severe thunderstorm warnings, and 267 flash flood warnings, and whereas communities across the state have borne the impacts from wildfires, severe weather, damaging hail, high winds, and flooding, and whereas Johnston County had Hurricane Matthew, which resulted in tremendous physical and financial impacts, and whereas every community, business, family, and individual in Johnston County must be ready for natural and man-made disasters, including tornadoes, flooding, hurricanes, and public disturbances that might disrupt normal daily activities, and whereas Johnston County residents can take a simple, a few simple steps, making a family disaster plan, creating an emergency supply kit, and staying informed to help make preparedness and personal responsibility a priority, and whereas Johnston County residents should know the risks for their area and plan accordingly, and whereas Johnston County residents should help the elderly and those who cannot help themselves, and whereas Johnston County residents should include the safety of their pets and/or livestock in their emergency plans, and whereas Johnston County, North Carolina Emergency Management, and the State of North Carolina have collaborated to recognize September as North Carolina Preparedness Month to encourage Johnston County residents to be disaster-ready. Now, therefore, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2025, as Preparedness Month in Johnston County, and encourage all county residents to plan and prepare weather-related and man-made disasters by assembling their emergency supply kits and updating their emergency plans. And I'd like to enter that in the form of a motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
All right, next up, we have proclamation, Child Passenger Safety Week and National Seat Check Saturday. And on this one, I've asked Commissioner Stevens to read the proclamation. Jennifer, I'll turn it over to you.
My name is Jennifer Williams. I am the Safe Kids Johnston County Coalition Coordinator, and I'm also the Office Manager of the Partnership for Children. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you guys today. Just to give you a few updates about the Child Passenger Safety Program and express our deepest appreciation for your continued support. As of June 30, Johnston County proudly has 79 certified child passenger safety technicians living in the state database. These dedicated individuals include community advocates, human services agency staff, and first responders, some of whom live in Johnston County but serve in our neighboring counties. We currently have two fire departments and two police departments actively participating in the program, hopefully soon to be three, as they just got four officers certified within the last two months. Their involvement is critical in ensuring that families across our county have access to life-saving education and resources. Our mission is simple but vital, to ensure that every child in Johnston County is safely secured in the right seat every trip, every time. This work is made possible through private donations and grants, including generous support from the Governor's Highway Safety Program through the State Office of the State Fire Marshal. For the past two years, we've also been fortunate to receive funding from the town of Smithfield, allowing us to provide car seats to families in need within the town. These partnerships have enabled us to host public car seat check events, distribute car seats to families who otherwise could not afford them, and educate caregivers on proper installation and usage. Our upcoming event at the Clayton Walmart on September 20th is just one example of how we're bringing these services directly to the community. There is still work to be done. We continue to see families who lack access to safe transportation options for their children, especially within the special needs population. With your help and advocacy, we can expand our reach, strengthen our technician network, and ensure that no child in Johnston County is left vulnerable due to a lack of resources. I invite you to continue supporting this program by championing its importance in our community. Together, we can make Johnston County a model for child passenger safety across North Carolina. Now, I would like to share some data with you from fiscal year 2425. In this 2425, Johnston County checked 174 car seats, with 36 of those being from the Child Restraint Divergent Program. We provided 87 car seats to families across the county, and we had seven agencies participating in our program, with a 79.65% misuse rate on their car seat usage. And so far this year, in 2526, our agencies have checked 38 car seats, 10 of those being check-only, 11 being the Child Restraint Divergent Program, and 17 of those families received a new car seat for their child. And so far, we've had four agencies reporting. Most of our agencies only report quarterly, so we won't have those until the end of September. And again, I thank you guys for listening and for your support, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any of them.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. I was looking at History Channel on TV, and a car, I think it was a Corvair, in the early 60s was built with a basket behind the back seat for the lay of an Infiniti. And my wife commented, they just stood on the front seat between parents. We've come a long way. Thank you for what you do.
And one of the services that we're able to provide is we can check the recalls for their car seats for them, and now also due to a program called Check to Protect, we can also check their vehicle recalls for them while they're getting their car seats checked.
That's great.
What are the agencies that someone can go to to check to see if their car seat is installed properly?
Our permanent checking stations include the Partnership for Children, the Selma Fire Department, the Clayton Fire Department, the Clayton Police Department, and the Bitsom Police Department, and hopefully within the next couple of months, the Selma Police Department.
Awesome. Thank you.
I believe that the Cleveland Fire Department does that as well?
They're not on my list, but I'll be glad to reach out to someone and get them on there.
Okay. All right.
Very.
All right.
Okay. Child Passenger Safety Week 2025 proclamation. Whereas children are Johnston County's most precious resource, and whereas between 2010 and 2023, there has been an 18.8% decline in child motor vehicle traffic fatalities, and whereas children ages two to five who use safety belts instead of child safety seats or booster seats are four times more likely to suffer serious head injuries in a crash, and whereas when installed and used correctly, child safety seats can prevent injuries and save young lives. Whereas child safety seats can reduce fatal injuries by up to 71% for infants and 54% for toddlers, toddlers ages one to four, and whereas research from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration indicates a 46% misuse rate for child safety seats, significantly reducing their effectiveness, and whereas all 50 states have laws requiring the use of child safety seats for children. And whereas child passenger safety technicians in Johnston County continue to support caregivers by ensuring children are safely and properly secured every time they ride, and whereas for all these reasons and for the well-being of our children, Johnston County is committed to working closely with caregivers and safety advocates to help reduce the number of young lives lost on our roadways. Our goal is to educate all caregivers on how to properly install and use child safety seats. Caregivers are urged to take advantage of the free services provided by child passenger safety technicians to ensure their children receive the best possible protection. Now, therefore, we, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 21st through 27th, 2025, as Child Passenger Safety Week. Certified child passenger safety technicians will host a public event at the Clayton Walmart on September 20th, offering free car seat inspections and hands-on guidance to caregivers by ensuring every child is properly buckled up on every trip, every time. We can work together to prevent injuries and save lives. Adopted this the second day of September, 2025, and I submit that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, the next item up is the Johnston County Land Development Code Stormwater Management Ordinance Revisions, and we have our Utilities Director, Shandra Farmer, here to present that to us.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have talked several times about this, but I do have a brief presentation to kind of summarize where we've been, where we are, and where we plan to be headed. Thank you. So just a quick recap of the timeline. We started back in early 2020 when the state came out with the updated NOSE rules, and we started revisions to our proposed program. We had our first stakeholders meeting in March of 2020. Unfortunately, COVID hit after that and slowed down the process a little bit, but in the meantime, we continue to submit our proposed program revisions to the state to ensure we continue to comply with the new NOSE rules that have been issued. 2024, we revised our agreement with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services. January 15th of '25, we had a stakeholders meeting with our, regarding our proposed program revisions. February 17th of '25, we prevented, we presented those revisions here to the board, updated on what we have had proposed. June 19th of '25, the ordinance revisions were posted on our website for public review and comment, and we noted the announcement for the public hearing that was to be held in August. June 23rd of '25, we emailed stakeholders regarding the proposed revisions and the public hearing. I'll note that this email included stakeholders that had previously attended our meetings. We used those email addresses to make sure that those stakeholders knew what was going on. Then in July 7th, the administrative manual revisions were posted on the website. Those are certainly more detailed than the ordinance revisions, so it took us a little bit more time to get those on there, but they were there July 7th. July 15th, the ordinance revisions were presented to the Johnston County Planning Board, with the Planning Board recommending approval to the Board of Commissioners. And then August 4th, if you recall, we had the public hearing regarding the stormwater ordinance revisions. We did not have any comments, public comments at that public hearing, and we had not received comments via email during this public comment process. That's just a screenshot of what we had on our website regarding the ordinance revisions and the announcement for the public hearing. So a reminder of the proposed revisions and what portions of the-
Shanna, so how many responses did we receive during that time period?
From, as far as-
Yeah, from January to-
We had a few initially between January, February. We had a few comments from some engineers about, let's keep it as simple as we can, a few comments. At that time, we were asking questions about, what do we do about attenuation? How can we look at very small projects, minor subdivisions, and what, how can we exempt those from some of the requirements that are not required under the NOSE rules? Unfortunately, the NOSE rules for quality really go down almost to a lot level kind of enforcement. But we had, after that period, once we posted this on our website, we have not received any technical comments. There was questions about, when is the public hearing going to be, AMP, and those kinds of things. That's all until then. Now, I've got, in the last week, I've had some more comments, and I'd like to go through the proposed revisions, and I can touch on those comments if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
The first revision to the ordinance is, we're recommending that new residential development- The first revision to the ordinance is, we're recommending that new residential developments that are not served by public sewer be designed with a minimum built-upon area of 6,000 square feet per lot. You know, we've talked back and forth about this several times, and our reasoning behind that minimum built-upon area. I will note, I should have put this one in green because this is in our agreement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. You can see the little color coding at the bottom, the green are items that are in our agreement with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, the red is state NOUSE rules, and the black are local requirements. The black is a requirement that we came up with at a local level, the suggestion for the 6,000, and that is something that U.S. Fish and Wildlife accepted into the agreement, and they saw that as a benefit to the agreement.
Ms. Farmer, could you, again, tell me the rationale why this was increased to 6,000?
So previously, we do not have a minimum built-upon area per lot. Our stormwater ordinance currently has an exemption for attenuation for residential subdivisions that have 15% impervious area throughout county's jurisdiction or 12% in the environmentally sensitive area. So what we have been seeing over time is engineers and developers design for that minimum amount, whichever area they're in, the 12% or the 15%, they take their impervious area for the roads out, and the remainder thus left, they divide amongst the lots that are left. So this prevents them from having to do attenuation and paying into the county's land dedication program. They take that impervious area left, they record it on the lot, and that's what the homeowner is limited to for their lot. Now, remember, built-upon area includes the home, includes the driveway, it includes concrete areas added around a pool, outbuildings, future garages added. And what we have found in recent years is that it's not been enough. That minimum amount generally is not enough for homeowners to come in and add on and use their lots as they want to. We've had some that have done that anyway, that expanded. They have got, had issues when they go to sell their lot with the title company because they exceeded what was recorded in their documents on that final plat. So in an effort to, number one, give homeowners the ability to utilize their property in the future without having to go through a cumbersome process or without being in violation, this is where we came up with 6,000 square feet. It was a staff analysis based on multiple site plans we've seen throughout the county in our experience. One thing we have done for homeowners who have come in with these very low limits, I mean, we have some that have 2,500, 3,000 square feet per lot, that's their limit on their lot. We have created some options for homeowners to add rain barrels or rain gardens to help with that additional impervious area, but it's important to note that those measures, yes, they're good for quality, they're good for a very small amount of rainfall, but cumulatively, those do not attenuate the rainwater. So cumulatively, if you've got everyone in the subdivision exceeding their limit, those downstream impacts are going to still occur. We're not preventing or minimizing those downstream impacts because they're not attenuating with those types of small methods.
So I said one clarification. So you said 2,500 to 3,000 square feet of built-upon, that is what their limit is?
No, that is what some have even, have designed to. Some are as low as that amount now, because they're trying to stay below that 12% or 15%, because it kicks them into that land dedication and that attenuation right now. So in order to avoid those methods, and they're putting, setting that limit that the homeowner stuck with.
Okay, so that is the limit?
Some of them are designing to that limit.
Right, right.
Right. The engineer, or the developer and engineer together should be determining that, the limit that they want, based on the product they want to construct. But oftentimes, like I said, it's based on that 12% or 15% in our ordinance, currently in the ordinance.
Thank you for that fuller explanation.
Sorry.
I think it's important to, for the public to know that this is being done for the benefit of the homeowners, based upon conditions that you folks are seeing out there that are occurring on a routine basis.
That's correct.
Yeah, but I did have one clarification. So the 6,000 was based on an analysis of...
That was a staff analysis that we had based that on in reviewing site plans and these overages throughout the county, and requests from homeowners that we see. 6,000, is that going to solve everyone's? No, there are many lots that have more than 6,000, but it should be generous to help at least get a start so homeowners don't buy the lot already maxed out in most situations.
Okay. I guess my point, that's not an arbitrary number that you set down and decided, 6,000?
That's correct.
Some analysis went to that.
And the design does not have to be limited to the 6,000. If the builder, the developer has a, they know that they want a different product, they want more, they have larger lots, they want to allow for more, they can certainly do so, they can design for more.
Okay.
Okay, the second revision that we have here is the quantity design criteria, which is essentially the attenuation. The environmentally sensitive area in Middle Creek, we are adding a 1 through 100-year attenuation requirement, and that is in the agreement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Everywhere else, we are adding the 1 through 25-year attenuation requirement. Currently, you may recall, our ordinance requires for a 1-year, 24-hour, 1-year storm design requirement for attenuation, when attenuation is required.
So let me make sure, so the green is what the U.S. Fish and Wildlife came to us?
Yes, that's required in the agreement with the Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, and then the other, elsewhere, that was our?
Local. The black is the local, and the red is the state, state NOUSE rules.
And I just want to back up one. So the 6,000, I know you said that should be under...
It is green.
But is it put in the green because we proposed it and they agreed to what we proposed?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So I would say technically, black is...
Yeah, that's kind of why I left it black. I feel like it is. They agreed to it, they agreed to it in this removal of this land dedication program and some of the other limitations that were previously in the agreement, but they agreed that that was, they were okay with that.
Okay. Was the land use dedication a problem for the Fish and Wildlife folks?
The land dedication program, that was something that we proposed removal from our program, because we had it in our program. Anytime a subdivision exceeded that 12% or 15%, it was required. But if we're going to come in with the attenuation requirement, the need for that land dedication would not be as beneficial, so we would not keep that second restriction on there.
Okay.
Item number three is the exemptions from attenuation quality. So when we were looking at residential development, this is where, when we started this process, we had talked quite a bit with engineers and developers, particularly at our stakeholders meetings, about where do we set this, you know, what's reasonable? And where we landed was with 19 lots and less, they would be exempt from attenuation, assuming there's no more than 8% pre versus post-development runoff increase. Also, for non-single-family residential, an addition of less than 10,000 square feet per lot or less, 10,000 square feet or less per lot, that would be exempt from attenuation. So the triggers for when a stormwater management plan is...
All right, I want to go back there. So 19 lots, what was the magic behind?
Or less.
Or less, what's the magic behind 19?
That was really a staff analysis based on, number one, we understand the concern long-term for maintaining the stormwater devices. When you start looking at, you know, smaller developments with maybe no HOA or a less, maybe a HOA that's not as strong, we felt like 19 lots is starting, more than, less than 19 lots is getting cumbersome to be able to maintain, effectively maintain, a stormwater device. Now, of course, certainly, there's still that analysis of the pre versus post-development 8% increase. There could be a 19-lot subdivision that has major downstream increase because they may be a very high density. They may have to attenuate.
Okay.
Okay, the triggers for the stormwater management plans, this is straight from our NOUSE rules. Single-family residential lot that disturbs more than 1 acre requires a stormwater management plan. Non-single-family residential that creates, that disturbs more than a half an acre of disturbance or creates or adds the built-upon area to a density of 24% or greater is subject to the stormwater plans.
And that's straight state?
Those are NOUSE rules requirements. We have gone around and around trying to determine minor, you know, could we equate something with minor subdivisions, but we've really been unable to do so because of the way the NOUSE rules are, the way the NOUSE rules are written. We don't have to necessarily do attenuation, but certainly, that quality piece is going to still be there. The nutrient component is still there for even a minor subdivision.
All right. Eventually, my brain will catch up since it's after the holiday morning. Back to number three. Let me see what my, we've got the 19 lots, and I had a question on that. The 19 lots, and I know we're in the process of developing our UDO, does that tie to any number of houses in our UDO whatsoever? It seems to me it makes sense.
I'm not aware of that. You know, UDO revisions are still in process, so I don't know where those are going to land. No, that was a stormwater staff. We evaluated that, and that's where we landed. That's what we threw out there as we were having these final stakeholder engagements.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it just seems to me that that would, there would be some number in our UDO that would correspond to that. And I know that's for other folks to figure out, but it seems like that ought to tie to, I know it's not major or minor...
Well, you know, like I said, initially, we, oh, I think I broke something. We were looking at, you know, like I said earlier, minor subdivisions, what can we relate with minor subdivisions, but that's so small.
Right.
Certainly don't want attenuate. We started out without this exemption for 19 lots, and you were talking about attenuating for 10 lots, and that just doesn't seem reasonable from just really a logistical perspective.
All right. I promise to try to stay up to speed where you are.
No, that's, that's fine. Again, this is why we've had this out here for stakeholders to comment. 19 lots, is that good, is that bad? You know, any kind of feedback. And since we've added that 19 lots, I don't believe we have had any comments on the 19 lots until the last week, and I'll get those in just a minute.
All right. Go on to number five.
Okay. Okay, number five. And that's the removal of the land dedication program from the ordinance requirement. Currently, if you exceed 12% in the ESA, 15% in the other areas of the county are required to pay into this program. Non-single-family residential is a higher number. We proposed removing that land dedication program from the ordinance. It's, very few utilize the program, and it's really not been as effective as we initially hoped it would be, unfortunately. There's an option for the developer to actually purchase land, have land in that same watershed in the same location and dedicate there. Otherwise, they pay the county, or the county to go secure the land and put it in a permanent conservation easement. We have used, some of these funds have gone to Triangle Land Conservancy. We've worked with them on some permanent conservation easements. Unfortunately, you don't always get the same local protection that you would get if that measure were implemented right there in that same watershed, in that same drainage basin. And that's why essentially, what's, we're proposing removal of this in lieu of adding, and adding the attenuation requirement. That attenuation requirement will offer that protection in that localized drainage area, that same watershed, that same basin.
All right.
Questions on that one?
If there's any funds in that account, where, what would happen with that money that's in that account?
That could still be used to aid Triangle Land Conservancy. It would still be used for the same purpose, any funds that are there or still do into that fund, those would still be utilized for the same purpose.
Okay.
I guess to piggyback on that, just because conserving as much land as possible is important for us as commissioners, is there any variance you see on this? Like if we could get it in the same way? I guess, help me understand, is it really necessary to take it away completely, or is this something that we could still refine to be an option?
No one's really commented on it and asked questions about it. Again, it's just not been effective. Very few participate in it because they're designing their subdivision at the 15%. They're saying, okay, we're going to sign 3,000 square feet per lot, so we don't have to do land dedication, and we don't, and we don't have to attenuate.
I guess I'm just asking, is there a potential opportunity here for us to be able to pay to conserve more land while addressing some of the stormwater?
So the legal issues we've also found around that is, the county cannot hold, I don't believe we can hold a permanent conservation easement as a county. So you have to find an agency to come in and take that over, such as Triangle Land Conservancy. They have their own projects, their own drivers for what they want. They won't necessarily just come in and take over a 3-acre parcel in the wetlands of Cleveland. That's, that's an issue, is the actual implementation and preserving of that.
Okay. Thank you.
It can be recorded on a plat as non-developable, but will that change in the future? Because it's not restricted by permanent conservation, so who's going to hold that land is the issue.
Well, that was kind of one of my questions. I know I've had it caught you before on just random open space and how it gets left and what's the plan and all the things. So I was just trying to figure out if there was an opportunity there for us to...
I think logistically, it's an issue, because who is going to maintain it? Who's going to protect that land? Who's going to own that land? And again, I think when the program was established, we assumed some of these conservation groups would be willing to do so, and they are, but they have their own projects. They don't want small onesie, twosie ones here and there.
And you said part of the problem is the development in, I'm going to say, in the western side of the county and the land dedication being in the eastern side. It's not in the watershed that it's...
Not always, that's correct. Yeah, you know, many times when we take these funds and we go to another program, another entity for their projects, they're not necessarily in that same watershed.
So are you talking less than 10, less than 100, that folks that have participated in?
Oh, number of projects? I'm not really sure. We've had, I don't know what the balance is in the program now, but it's not, it's been in hundreds of thousands, like 500 or less. I think the balance now is probably less than $200,000.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Any other questions?
In that proposed area, you're talking 30 to 40%, is that the 12 to 15 respective areas, or is it 30 environmentally sensitive area and the 40 otherwise? Why do you have 30 to 40?
Yes, so 30% in the, it'll be able to go up to 30% in the ESA, 40% outside the ESA.
Okay. Anyone else? All right.
Okay.
Next.
So number seven was really some design manual revisions, just to clarify plan submittals and all the documentation required, really just an administrative step to ensure we have everything in order in the checklist, so it makes a cleaner review.
Did we skip six?
No, I thought, can you go back? Number six, the nitrogen.
Oh, I skipped that one. Okay, sorry.
I was reading, so I was like, you know...
I'm sorry about that. Nitrogen caps are removed. So currently, there, the current ordinance says, once you hit 6 pounds per acre per year, you cannot buy down in the environmentally sensitive area. Non-single-family residential, 8 in the ESA, 10 outside, you cannot buy down. The new rules do allow the developer to choose whether they buy down their nitrogen offset or they actually implement a measure to treat it, provided, once they hit 24% impervious area, they are required to install a stormwater control measure for nitrogen under the NOUSE rules. This is a NOUSE rule revision. This is really a, it becomes less stringent kind of rule.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Number eight, clarification on conversion of bonds and performance bonds. We did add additional language in our design manual on this, clarifying this. There are, we've had lots of questions on these kinds of bonds, particularly as we talk about long-term maintenance and responsibility for these stormwater measures, which is generally, in many subdivisions in residential areas, is going to be likely left with the homeowners' association. We've added language to clarify bonds for completion. Unfortunately, you know, we don't maintain, the county does not maintain these devices long-term. We do not, I believe with some of the new rules with the state, we cannot require, we're limited as to what we can require financially, be initially established for long-term maintenance. So we've added additional language on that in the design manual. Most of that, when we talk about bonds, means they're trying to record a final plat, the subdivision's essentially constructed. Maybe there's still some disturbance going on for lot-level things, they don't want to... They don't want to put the final stormwater pond, they don't want to convert it from a sediment basin to a stormwater pond yet. So, we allow them to bond that until the disturbance in the subdivision is completed, and then they make it the final stormwater measure.
Okay. So, that's a short-term fix?
That's a short-term, yes.
Yeah, short-term fix.
Until the final measure's in place. That's great. Item number nine, very similar, talking about AS-Built certifications on these ponds. We do want to make sure any stormwater facilities that are installed, they're certified by the engineer, which is a current requirement, and also that we have AS-Built, so it's a record of what's been built and what should be there to be maintained long-term, and that record would be available to the HOA long-term. We clarified that in the design manual. Item number 10, annual inspections of the stormwater control measures. This is a NOSE rule requirement, so these, these devices that are installed will require an annual inspection and certification by a qualified professional. I believe that is allowed for as a PE, a registered land architect, or a surveyor, licensed surveyor.
And then, who will be keeping track of the inspections?
So, we will have, we have a program where we require those to be submitted to the county annually. We require them to be completed. We don't go do those for the, for the responsible party, but we ensure that they're completed.
Okay.
Do we spot check that at all?
We currently have, we do, and this program will be, obviously, there's going to be more, so this will be a more stringent program, and I would say we'll be looking very closely at it. It'll be more than, yes, but in the field spot check, yes, we can, yes, we have certified inspectors on our team that can do that.
Can you, just for the public and for everyone here, kind of talk about what is required for those inspections? Because, you know, in our previous conversations, I have concerns, and I guess this would now, would this essentially fall on an HOA management company?
Right.
Would this fall on the developers as far as the inspection goes? What are the requirements?
So, it would be the responsible party. When the device is completed, before the approval is, the final approval is issued by the county, there's an inspection and maintenance agreement recorded with the register of deeds that goes with the property and goes with the device. That outlines the requirements that are to be completed on the facility. Generally, you know, it depends on the type of stormwater control device. Generally, it's, you know, maintaining your vegetation, whether, you know, mowing, checking your spillways, checking your outlet devices, keeping those cleaned out. It's, there's a checklist for those requirements, depending on the type of facility, and the HOA would be responsible to have a qualified professional complete that process and submit that to the county. But I shouldn't say the HOA, the HOA or whoever is responsible, whether it's still be a developer, whoever's still responsible for that O and M agreement. And that would be a yearly process.
I just want to bring up again my concerns about this actually getting done around the county. As somebody who deals with HOAs, they're management companies on a regular basis, unfortunately, they're just, the whole organization as HOA management companies is very lackluster, and it just, it really concerns me that this is something that we may have to somehow step in as a county and take over a lot sooner than, than later.
Or HOAs that then go inactive.
Mm-hmm. I mean, which is more common than not, especially throughout the county. I mean, I do see those tides turning a little bit, but then I also see developers going away from putting in HOAs to begin with because the residents, or the buyers, I should say, are kind of steering away from them because they're in a rural area. They want it to feel more rural and have the rural rules, for lack of a better word. And so, like I said, these are just also things that just give me pause for concern of having a lot of unmanaged stormwater treatment areas, solutions that are truly not performing as they should be.
What is the requirement today?
Same.
And what is compliance today for that?
We, we have a program where we do require those to be inspected annually.
But what is the compliance with that?
Uh...
I don't think it's going to get any better under it.
You know, we've not been able to focus entirely on that, but we actually just hired a new position two weeks ago, and that's one of the main requirements of the position, is the, to ensure enforcement associated with these, ensure we're collecting these that have been inspected and maintained.
What's the remedy? Lack of...
I wish I had a great solution. This is my biggest concern about the proposed revisions. The, you know, we certainly want these to be maintained. Our intent is to focus on that and to push through and try to ensure, number one, public education is going to be important, education to HOAs. We hear, HOAs contact us about these, they, you know, some of them know about them, but it's certainly going to be a wider effort where more HOAs are going to be looking for this, and management companies are going to have to understand this better. So, public education's going to be one big thing. Then, of course, our enforcement associated with it, our reminders, hey, it's due, it's time for you to get this completed.
Is it due at like a certain time of the year? Is it like a year past the subdivision going in? I didn't know.
The way we've currently got it drafted is the end of the year, January 1 of each year.
Okay.
So, that, you know, kind of, we're trying to keep them consistent.
Okay.
With that. But certainly, it's something that, long-term, could it be an issue? I think it's, this is part of the reason for the 19 lots as well. You know, generally, a smaller subdivision may not have an HOA or as an effective HOA. These stormwater ponds, though, one thing we have to keep in mind is they're generally, most of the time, if they're not maintained, what happens is they grow up with vegetation, right? So, actually, we're getting, nutrient removal is even better. But some residents may not like that because there is a potential for more other problems that could come with that. But there's still a property owner for that, for that parcel, you know, to maintain that property, whether it's got a stormwater pond on it or something else. There is land to be, there is land to be maintained.
I guess my point earlier is we're not going from 100% compliance.
No.
And going down. We're starting from probably something that's pretty bad.
No, I don't want to say pretty bad. We have to keep in mind that, again, most of our residential development designs at 15% and doesn't install attenuation. It don't, currently don't have those devices. Most of your higher-density neighborhoods do, a lot of the sewer neighborhoods do. But, so we are going to see more of these devices.
What are the consequences for non-compliance? No question.
Well, of course, we have some consequences in the ordinance that, you know, we can follow through with going through the legal process, but the physical consequences of a device that's there that's not been cut, is that what you're asking? What are physically what happens to the facility or legally?
Legally, both.
Well, mine was both.
We have to defer to our legal counsel on the legal side of things.
I know, I just looked over at Jennifer.
So, enforcement of the stormwater ordinance would be no different than enforcement in any other land development ordinance that we have. And typically, the way that these types of things are handled, obviously, compliance is always the first goal in trying to communicate with property owners and those sorts of things, but that does not always work. And so, when that does not work, we do have the opportunity to move forward with the legal process to get injunctive relief that would require, through court order, that these improvements be made. If, in the very rare circumstance that there is not someone in which we can enforce against, they don't answer, you know, those sorts of things, the financial remedy that we have after, after that process, if there's a court order, is that the court can actually allow the county to go in and make that improvement. Of course, there's a consequence to that because then, of course, the property is leaned for the cost of whatever that remediation would be. So, that's typically, this ordinance enforcement would be no different than any other land development ordinance that we have, but that, that's the final conclusion, so to speak, as to what would happen if we could not get voluntary compliance with regards to any enforcement of the ordinance.
I'm sure there's some very good HOAs out there, so I'm going to put that out before I say what I'm going to say. But the majority of the complaints that I hear from residents that live in those subdivisions and those areas are HOAs that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. I mean, honestly, that's, and unfortunately, we don't have a lot of control over that. And so, to leave it to the HOA that's going to ensure compliance with all this, I don't see, I don't know, I don't want to be a pessimist, but I just don't see it working very well without some type of ramifications to make that, make that happen.
Well, especially with your self-managed HOAs, you know, given the option to, for everybody to come together and pay for an engineer to come out there and inspect, they're going to put it, I mean, I couldn't get my past HOA to just throw in some bushes to go around the, you know, the entrance, and I feel like, when it comes down to it, these are the ones that are going to be, I feel like they're our biggest body of how HOAs are managed in the county, and they're going to be our biggest offenders constantly. The, there's going to be one person who's in charge, who is either willing to pay for it, and then the rest of the homeowners are not, and then, I don't know, it's just, you and I have been talking about this since inception, it's just a follow-up, I'm very, very concerned about its opening.
Is there, I guess also, one of my questions, and seeing this with the planning board aspect of developments coming in, is there not a way like the stormwater pond, or whatever it might be, control not be like limited to just like one lot? So, then that way, if HOA dissolves or becomes inactive, it just can result to that one property owner?
That's going to be very dependent upon the, how the storm, the subdivision is laid out and the natural grade of the subdivision.
Okay.
You can't, you know, you can't put the pond at the top of the hill, it's got to be at the bottom of the drainage area. Depending on the grade of the subdivision, there could be several different drainage basins in that subdivision. It's possible there could be one, but it's very likely that there could be more than one in some subdivisions. It really depends on the subdivision side and the size and the grade of the subdivision. Natural topography is going to drive that.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Anything else?
One more item, number 11, is the buffer rules. We're not proposing any changes to the NOSE buffer rules. Those are currently included as a section to our stormwater ordinance. We would like to move those into land, in the code, in the land development code to its own section. It will not be part of the stormwater ordinance, but there are no proposed revisions to that. All right. This is just, you've seen this chart before.
Before you go on, I was going to ask you if you could give us a little analysis. So, whenever we're talking about stormwater, I think everyone would agree that the more rooftops and the more pavement and the more parking lot, you know, is going to be a problem. So, we're trying to make some rules to help those downstream, and I don't think anybody's got a problem with that. We did get a lot of emails in the last week or so that developers and builders and realtors would like us to postpone the vote on this, but listening to the summaries, there are some, some things that I think would make it, make it maybe a little less cumbersome for developers and, and some to maybe make it a little more. But if you were, if you were talking to a developer, or maybe even if you were a developer and you were looking at these, what could you, what could you say is the good that comes out of these changes? And then, of course, maybe some of the things that are going to be a little bit tougher as well.
Well, I mean, I think the good is we're protecting our citizens of the county, residents, future residents and existing residents of the county. We certainly, this ordinance has certainly more protections when we talk about stormwater quantity. We receive daily concerns and complaints from citizens throughout the county regarding stormwater runoff. There are some that we can assist with through our stormwater ordinance now, and there's some that we cannot. There are many that this will help protect in the future. This may minimize those impacts from development. There are some that this, you know, won't change the issue that's already there. But I do believe this will ensure that we minimize those downstream impacts for our residents and for these natural waterways. The thing, what's happened and happens over time is as we add this impervious area, these storm events, these larger storm events, the immediate runoff causes scour in these creeks and waterways. It moves channels, and we have, we have people calling because their home is threatened by a creek that's moved because it's got more flow than it used to have. It's going to protect the natural, the environment of the channels, the wildlife in those channels long-term, and it's going to protect the downstream property owners long-term. It also will ensure that property owners can make modifications and utilize their property in the future. They won't be buying a lot that's already maxed out with the impervious area. That's a benefit. Of course, the drawback is what we just talked about. There's a stormwater device, very likely, that has to be maintained long-term, and there's certainly some responsibility, financial and labor responsibility associated with that.
So, the overall arching theme, of course, is environmental responsibility, and I think everybody, everybody agrees with that. I think what a lot of people just are worried about is cost, and so, do you see this as any kind of increased cost to housing in Johnston County as, you know, initially or long-term?
I think that's going to depend on the subdivision. Each subdivision will be a little bit different because it's going to depend on, like I said, the topography of the subdivision. Can you handle the attenuation with one stormwater device? Does it require four stormwater devices? And that's really going to be variable. The change for a 15-lot subdivision will likely be less than what it would be for a 100-lot subdivision. We've not done it, we've not completed a cost analysis at a staff level, just because it is so variable. Every subdivision will be different, and there are lots of decisions for developers and engineers to make on what they want their subdivision to look like, what they want it designed for.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions?
So, wanted to add, of course, we originally, we had proposed an effective date of November 1st for the ordinance, but as you have, I know you have received correspondence from others, but over the last week, I have received quite a few comments and feedback. Again, I had not received anything through our public hearing, but last Tuesday, the 26th, I received my first, first email with the request to, for the commissioners to delay the vote on this. I met, I received another one on Wednesday of last week. I met Thursday with representatives from the Johnston County Building Industry Association to talk about some of these proposed changes. Received, again, an email on Friday asking to delay this and with some, and some comments, some good comments, some things that I think we can accommodate through our design manual, some things if we were to consider more would certainly require different ordinance revisions. Then, over the last, yesterday, I received two emails, and then I received one this morning, also asking that we delay the, the board delay the consideration.
We had a few of those, too.
I'm sure the ones I have, I think, are the same ones you received, but...
Likewise, received comments. I'm curious, did any of these commenters explain why they didn't take advantage of the perfect comment periods that were offered from since the first year?
Well, I did have some comments from the Johnston County Building Industry Association. I think they'd had some staff changes with the people who typically help ensure they keep track of the proposed changes, and I think they were concerned, some of their staff changes delayed the word getting out to some of their members is what they had said, but others, that was the only comment I had on that.
So, I had a question not related to the delays, but are there any portions of our county that these rules will not apply to? And I'm thinking municipalities and our largest PUD.
Right. So, these rules would apply to any proposed new development in the county's planning jurisdiction, November 1 forward. So, does not apply to ETJs of the towns, they have their own planning regulations, and then there is a, the Flowers Plantation PUD that is in the county's jurisdiction was grandfathered in prior to 1997, so it's not, our stormwater ordinance is not applicable to that one.
So, I guess also trying to figure out the timeline. So, if a subdivision is approved at like this month's planning board meeting, will that one be grandfathered in for these?
That would fall under our existing stormwater regulations. Certainly, if they chose to use the new regulations, the new ordinance, we could allow them to use, follow those rules when they submit. But anything that has been submitted for a planning board, or has planning board approval prior to the November 1 deadline.
Okay.
Would be the old rules.
Okay.
I just also have to bring up a concern of, you know, when you're dealing with large developments, transactions like this, they tend to start 12, 18, 24 months before any of this ever comes to be. And so, one of my biggest concerns about us making a decision that has an implementation very quickly is this is going to largely detriment, and I don't just mean residential, I mean, commercial developments, things of that sort, that these projects are already online, under contract, they're in brass and office going back and forth, Shandra's getting questions answered, and now we're going to put a major stop change on some of these dis... answered, and now we're gonna put a major stop change on some of these discussions and negotiations to that point, not that we get involved in anyone's businesses as far as that goes, but it's just food for thought for those to know that most things that this will affect are things that started 12 or 18 months ago, and so, a 60-day implementation can be very jarring. Have a large impact.
All right, any other questions, comments?
I guess one of my other questions was, going back, I'm still trying to take all this in, just like Chairman said earlier, was, so for the exemptions for 19 lots and, or less, can you kind of be more specific of what it means from the exemptions?
So, those would be exempt from attenuation, assuming they have a less than 8% increase in pre- and post-development runoff, they would not be required to install the stormwater devices to attenuate.
Okay.
They still may have to have a dry pond or wet pond for nitrogen, I don't know, it would just totally be dependent upon the subdivision and the development of the, the subdivision itself, but generally with 19 lots, unless, we would say, no attenuation as long as you keep that increase to 8%.
How do you calculate the 8%?
That's a stormwater method, I mean, it's a accepted engineering practice, that's in our stormwater design manual, it's industry-wide, there's, there's a couple of different methodologies that can be used, but it is outlined in our stormwater design manual. We're trying to be as consistent as we can with that, to ensure that we're getting appropriate factors when you consider runoff values.
All right, any other questions?
This statement says, in fact, we've been working on this since 2020, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we're five years into this, so I question how much more study needs to be done on it.
There won't ever be a time that you don't catch something midstream, you know?
Um, my question is, how, how can we, if we needed to make changes, or edit, or modify, how would that come about?
So, once the ordinance is adopted, the revised ordinance, it would be the same process we've gone through this time, hopefully much quicker though. You know, we would evaluate any proposed revisions, it would require a public hearing, certainly we would propose stakeholder, anytime we do ordinance revisions, we propose, propose the stakeholders meeting and engagement, then the public hearing with the board, and then the adoption by the board, so it would be the same process.
And then when was the last time this was changed?
The stormwater ordinance, I'm not aware of any ordinance revisions in the last 15, it's been quite some time since the stormwater ordinance has been changed. I don't know if there have been any changes to the ordinance itself since the actual adoption in 97, and we did modify the ordinance when we added the buffer rules to that ordinance 10 years ago or so, can't remember, but we have not recently updated the, the stormwater ordinance, not in the last 10 to 15 years.
Just thinking of how many comments I've received, and everything else with stormwater runoff, people's yards being flooded, roads being flooded, all the things in the last 10 to 15 years from development.
All right, any, anyone else have any comments? I had a couple. And, and I know the, the rules changes started in 2020, but I think that was more state-level than us, and really, but really for us, we've had seven months that we've, we've made it known that we have public hearings, and opportunities for comment, stakeholders' meetings. So, I think that has been plenty, plenty of time, and I think this board, and maybe I speak for myself, has wanted to have improvements made to our stormwater regulations. I don't think that we wanted them to become punitive to our residents, and to drive up the cost, and it, and it concerns me a little bit, we don't know what the, the impact of the costs are. And kind of with all that said, I don't know that an arbitrary extension of a deadline makes a lot of sense, that we just pick a date and, and expect it's all gonna be solved by the end, because I think there's still gonna be more questions. What makes more sense, at least to me, is we have a UDO that is under development, and, and I'm looking at Brastin, he can get up and comment if he needs to, but I think we're looking at probably a January timeframe for that, to, to get enacted, and I don't know if there's a delay after that, Brastin, I may get you to speak to that, if, if you would. But to me, I think that makes sense, and we're not to mention our comprehensive transportation plan update, and we also have a sewer allocation policy that we need to figure out, and how that all ties in. So, in my opinion, rather than have multiple changes and revisions, because we've got a lot of moving parts, is, is let's set this so that it all goes down as close to one time as it can, and if that's January, that's, I don't know my math, three, four months, five months maybe, it seems like that would be a reasonable attempt. It, it does allow for those who have something in the process that haven't accounted for the stormwater, because I, I think it will have impacts, I don't know how, how much, but I, I think that's a, a reasonable solution to, to this, is let's make sure the UDO, stormwater, that all matches up. The 19, and if I'm not mistaken, maybe there's a, at 20 lots, it requires an HOA, so maybe that, I don't, I'm not an attorney, but it seems like that's in my mind somewhere, that that's why the 19 is there. But it seems, seems a reasonable accommodation, that has some chance to do it. The other, the other thing that I would suggest totally, it's not unrelated to this, but it would be nice for us to take some examples of various projects, and let's look at what the impact of these new stormwater ordinances will be on development. Again, you know, affordable housing, we, we need to keep affordable housing, but we also need to have better stormwater ordinances, to make sure we're protecting those who are downstream, and it's not uncommon for us to get calls about somebody's stormwater is running in my backyard, and get pictures on that thing, so that there's a balance that we've gotta have, again, between the new, and those who've been here. So, that's just my two cents on, on that. And Brastin, you, do you, can you come up and, and kind of update us on the UDO, and when you think that, I would say, I get best, worst, but a reasonable timeframe that that may, may fall in place?
I think you hit it perfectly, that we're looking at a January timeframe, having an, an effective date of January 1st. So we'll be presenting a full draft to this board later in this fall, and we will be looking to go to a public hearing shortly after that, once there's been another, an open public comment period, we'd be looking for a January 1 effective timeframe for effective date.
All right, any, any other questions for, for Brastin, but thanks for, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna bring up while you're up here, and, and again, I don't think any of us are up here trying to kick the can, but what are some other gaps that you're seeing may, or some other issues that may arise from the implementation of this, from, from your department stance? I know you and Shandra have to work very well together on a lot of developments, whether it be commercial, residential, but is there any other issues, concerns, that we may not be taking into consideration right now, that your department sees?
I mean, internally, would, internally, there's going to be the, the consistency of plans, other plans and policies, correct? So, really, the biggest issue at this point is policies, being your water, and, and your sewer policies, both residential and non-residential, whether it be allocation capacity, or, or just general service policy. We need to make sure those are consistent, and we think that can be done fairly quickly. I don't, I think that can be done in this process, between now, when we unveil the draft, full draft, to the time of effective date, or at least adoption, I think we can certainly get that done.
All right, any other questions, comments?
How is staff handling already, I know you mentioned Shandra trying to make sure, a lot of this stuff is in the development code, of making sure that these proposed changes are in, updated in the UDO, and outlining for submittal of subdivisions, as well as commercial? Is it, is it really easy to go ahead and just add them in, and then for the checklist, or is that, or is it gonna be too confusing to do it November, but then starting it in January?
I, I don't think it's, it's really that concerning, is when the effective date of, of these requirements are, are put in place. I think there is some, there is definitely value, I believe, in, in bringing those together, and making those effective with the, with the Land Development Code, or UDO, at the same time. It just gives us a little more time to ensure we have consistency.
Right.
The UDO.
That was more of my question.
Or these particular ordinances here. I think there is some value in that, certainly.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a, a general comment, I think there's no question that we need a more robust standard that we're designing to, a one-hour storm is simply inadequate. We have seen flooding events in this county outside of unusual weather activity, that have washed out roads and bridges, and we've had actual highway deaths because of that. Quite a number of people drive through water, they think that it's, it's low, they either get swept off the road, or the culvert has been washed away, that's not, you can't see that, but there's been quite a test in this county based on that situation. So it is a public safety issue, it's also a water quality issue. The Noose River is our primary drinking water source, if you monitor the, the Riverkeeper page, they have testing on the river all the way from Raleigh down to the coast, and there's three testing stations in Johnston County, and they routinely fail for fecal coliform, and they have a no-swim advisory in, in the river. This is runoff that is running into these rivers, it's taken septic fields, it gets saturated, and it's pushing it out into the, into the rivers, you know, so that's a serious concern right there. So we definitely need to, I fully support taking the design standard from one, from one year, one-hour storm up to a 25-year storm. I think that is a reasonable threshold, try to get control of these runoff issues.
Well, I guess, and, and to your point, Mr., I don't think any of us are not in agreement that we definitely need to address these stormwater issues, to, to both of your points, we have heard that for years with, you know, from planning board meetings, where the neighbors come up and, and are frustrated, and, and all the way around. I will say, you know, my, my concern is a little bit, are we swinging the pendulum too far, too fast? And again, you know, I'm, I'm not an expert in this area, I just wanna make sure that we're not too, again, swinging, swinging the pendulum too far and negatively affecting a lot of things that are out there, or in process, and we do have a lot of people in the industry, in the audience, I know we've heard from a lot this week, I just wonder if there's any more, is there a place, Chairman, to have a discussion, if there's anything else we're not thinking about when making this decision? I think, we all know that, that a change has to be made, that's not in question, without a doubt. I think we just wanna make sure that we're making the best decision, and that we're not causing some type of unthought-of detriment.
So, appreciate you putting me on the spot. I do, I do, yeah, I, I do feel...
We've been talking about this since February.
Yeah, so, so we have been talking about it for a long, a long time, and it's ramped up, so looking at all the people sitting on this side of the room, there's a lot of opportunities to speak, but I, I would ask, if there's, if y'all could figure out the one person that would, would, could come and address the board for about three minutes, I would allow that opportunity to, to be heard. Okay, that's not, not, I didn't think it was that side of the room. Uh...
Can we take three minutes?
Uh, if y'all wanna split it in a minute and a half, or a minute and two, you got three minutes, how about that, yeah?
So I'm here to represent the industry, I'm on the Johnston County.
If you say your name and address, please.
Adam Kingsley.
Okay.
Um, we are a little late to the game, part of that, like, was mentioned earlier, that we had some staffing issues, and the importance of the association in getting that information out, apparently was pretty important to a lot of our members, relied on us to get that out, and we didn't. And it's, it's kind of interesting that, I know that, after having a meeting that we had, that there was a lot sent out, but there wasn't a lot of feedback, I don't know why, by industry professionals, if it's a time issue, or just thinking that it's coming. Now, we know that there's, there's issues, but it's getting down to the word for word of the ordinances, and before you put it to law, that we just haven't had the time as industry to review it enough, to really know, you know, what's being said in there. You know, it's a very complicated issue, I mean, I think you, you have been dealing with it for five years, and think of all the questions that you have all brought up here today, after a five-year period. You know, it's almost, you need an advanced degree to really understand a lot of this, so we need to bring it to our professionals, and industry that have these advanced degrees, and understanding of state statutes, and what's required. Like, you saw the different colors up there, what the state's requiring mandates, what the fisheries and wildlife is requiring, and for us, you know, what, what is their needs, what has the county decided to put in there? We all get it, we all live or work here, and know a lot of these issues, but before we put this to law, we just like, more time to review it, get a better understanding. You know, other counties, you know, they've already implemented some of this, because of the density issues further upstream, but we just ask that you delay the vote, it sounds like it, it makes sense to wait till maybe that January timeframe, when they present their requirements that they would like to have, so that, that's what I request, just hope you could hold off, give us some time. We, we have some minutes, and then some information that we've gotten, and read through it, and a, you know, a quick review, and we did give some feedback to utilities, and, you know, just to further discuss some of those, those items, and possibly others that, you know, with such a quick review that we did, that, that we may have missed.
All right. You, you used all three minutes, but James, I'm gonna give you one.
James looks good, looks good development. So, thank you guys for everything you do, I appreciate it, because y'all are doing so much to, and have such a hard job, and I appreciate the time y'all were putting in. So, a couple of things I wanted to bring up, was, we're implementing, and we're having to pay to put in these facilities. Our engineers, who've been looking at this before, were like, okay, how'd I design this? But hadn't necessarily been looking at, what does it mean to lock costs? My initial evaluation, from talking to my engineers, is that it could be a range of $8 to $25,000 per lot cost to implement these, because not only do you have to develop the facilities, but you have to make room for the facilities, so if you lose a lot, or two lots in a neighborhood, that goes into that cost analysis. Then also, as was talked about before, with homeowners' association fees, you could easily see homeowners' association fees doubling, doubling, and if we put the facilities in, but we do not maintain them, what are we doing long-term? You know, because I think sometimes they will fail, and the county's gonna have to have a commitment. And right now, I believe that the county, and I think the world is staff here, but your staff needs more help than what they've got. I see municipalities in this county have more staff in certain departments than the county does, and the county's huge, so, you know, there's a commitment from the county on multiple levels, that I think are gonna go forward budget-wise, but as far as home affordability, if, if we just take a $15,000, kind of get in the middle and say, it's gonna cost 15 more thousand dollars, or potentially 15 more thousand dollars, depending on the track, because every track's gonna be different. You might have to have one, two, or three stormwater facilities depend on the track. That's what's so hard to wrap your head around, because you can't say, it's gonna cost me $5,000 per lot to implement this. And then, with the county having to go up on the system development fees, on top of this, those two fees together are gonna make a huge difference in housing affordability. I do think you've got our industry's attention now, and I think that even if you guys vote to implement now, that we're gonna be coming back to you saying, hey, this is what it costs, the difference of what it costs between the old rules and the new, new rules. I feel like that's something that may have been overlooked, that looking at... I feel like that's something that may have been overlooked, that looking at what is the implementation cost going to be long-term. So, thank you for that.
All right. Thank you, thank you. All right. I did have one question, Shandra, if you would come back up. So what is the process? I know there's, there's a, we will continue to look at everything, but what is the process for us to, is that a board-driven thing or staff-driven thing when there's opportunity to reevaluate the impact of this ordinance specifically, but any, any ordinance that we have?
Well, if the intent is not to adopt the ordinance as written today, we can certainly go back through the stakeholders process.
I'm just talking about if it's adopted, after, after any, if the ordinance is adopted, how, when will we look? Is there normal schedule? Is it once a year? Is it based on the board saying when you look at it? Is it based on your staff thinking when you look at it?
There's no standard time that we have to look at it routinely. I don't think, unless the U D O has a requirement in it, there's no, you know, there's no, it's not part of the current rules of a certain time. You can certainly do it anytime.
Mr. Chairman, revisions are typically driven by stakeholder comment, state legislative things that come about that require changes, and then, you know, experience in the field typically is what, is what drives change. Now, certainly, if there are things that, some changes are driven by the Board of Commissioners themselves, of course, based on the stakeholder feedback that you receive, but we don't have a, we don't have a set schedule that every, you know, eight months we're going to review this particular thing. It's more of, let's get it in, let's experience, let's live with it, see what needs to improve, if anything, and then make changes at that time. And then, of course, if there is a legislative change, whether it be through state statute or through the administrative.
You almost got a whole, you know, whole thing out, statement out.
So close. I can see him every time.
Yep. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I think there's opportunities for feedback, and I don't know what the board decision, but if it is to enact it today, I think as Mr. Lipscomb referred to, and from a number of people here, it has got the industry's attention, so I think we will be getting feedback consistently over the next short term on that. So, Commissioner Stow, what do you have?
I have a question in terms of the, we've got two regulatory environmental bodies that we're involved in, also our modifications. Do they have any deadlines they have put on us that these have to be in effect?
Good question.
They, I don't think so. We've submitted our program revisions to the state. Let's see, I forget what that said a couple of years ago, and they've still not pursued our vision, our revisions, moved those to the EMC. So we've been waiting on the state, so I don't, we certainly have until the, you know, we act, we have time through January, we submit those revisions back to the state. As long as we've been waiting on them, no.
Is that the same thing with the fish and wildlife agreements also?
Yes, they're not pushing that with a set timeline.
Two things, and I don't mean to get too deep in the weeds, but y'all know that's what I do. So I like the way you're going, where you were going with that, Chairman, with regards to when do we regularly assess these? Because I think, you know, one thing I feel I'm very proud of being on this board is we are not ones to kick hands. We are, we are finding problems, we're finding solutions, we're implementing them. Sometimes we won't know until we get done if the pendulum has swung too far. We won't know if it's not swung far enough, but I do feel like constantly revisiting and reevaluating what's working and what's not is something that this board has become very good at. So is there a place, and I don't know if this is a you question or a council question, but is there a place that we can put in some regular reviews to find out what's working for your office, what's working or not for the stakeholders, what's working or not for the county, and then what does that timeframe look like? Obviously, we put in these measures, I don't think a year is quite long enough to know, okay, are we seeing some, some good changes with regards to the stormwater? But I do think we shouldn't put it on boards 20 years from now to be having these conversations again of what's working and what's not. And the same thing on, you know, to the, to the point of those in the audience, if, if we have swung the pendulum too far, is there a place for some open conversation and dialogue that we can, can make some adjustments or amendments?
I think you got a good point, but I think the market should set that in the election cycle, frankly, you know? I mean, we're either responsive or we're not here.
I don't disagree with that. I just also would think, you know, I know I have standing evaluations within my, my own company of every year we evaluate, we do a SWOT analysis, what's working, what's not, you know? Is that something that we could do from a department level for some of these major issues?
I think it's something we certainly can look at, but at some point, you have to stop studying, you have to act. And, you know, I heard the comment, you know, that we hadn't had the time to review these rules. I think it is, the correct response may have been, we hadn't made the time to review these rules, because we allowed ample time to review these rules over the past nine months. Now, there is a mechanism to modify these rules, as General Counsel has stated, and it's written in the administrative section, that if the need arises based upon what is deemed to be a legitimate rationale, we can amend the rules at that point. They can change. They can be dynamic based upon what exists in the field conditions, regulatory changes, as well as what we see from an operational standpoint. So I think that that, that option is there. If these respective industries want to provide additional comments, they're certainly free to do so after the fact. It's not going to, if it, if it's worth modifying the rules, it can be done after the fact. But we, as a board, I'd say we have invested so much time in this, we need to move on to other issues. We feel like that we are at a place that is appropriate, and if it needs to change, like I say, there is a provision in these rules that allows those changes.
I think that's what I wanted to point out, is that something that we should make sure we keep on our radar, that we're regularly addressing?
I think that's a good observation.
When that needs to happen. And then one last thing, and I'll get out of the weeds. The three ponds that you gave us, the examples of, just for layman's terms and for those watching online, are these pretty much the only three options? And in the process, will they delineate, like, I guess, explain it to me, who's, you know, I'm not an engineer and do not want your job, but for these, you know, devices, essentially, can you talk to us about what you can expect as a potential homeowner developer with what this looks like?
All right, and these are just three devices. There are other types of devices that can be installed. These are your most common. The most common that we see now is probably the dry pond on here, which is essentially that. It looks like a pond, but it's dry, it's typically vegetated with, is grassed typically and maintained. The wet pond, it's that, it's a pond with standing water most of the time, most of the time. The wet pond, I should back up, I mean, the dry pond, I should back up and say typically holds water after a storm event 24 hours, maybe longer than 24 hours, but generally it's going to de-water over several days just after a storm event. The wet pond maintains water all the time. There's a set water level where the, generally, and it fluctuates based on storm events, so it can de-water over time as well, but still maintains water in the pond. And then the other example on here was a wetland, that's a constructed wetland. You can see, some people view that and say, oh, my goodness, that's just grown-up weeds, and it's not. It's specific vegetation to remove nutrients from the water that's collected into, into that area. That's a more natural-type-looking area. And there are other types of devices, engineered devices as well, that can be used for nutrient removal and for attenuation.
Thank you for explaining that. I think for anybody watching online or seeing this, may think, well, if I get to choose, you know, like you just said, what you do and don't want to look at, and I just wanted to make sure.
There are different benefits, there are different reasons to choose different ones. A dry pond offers that attenuation. It does offer some nutrient reduction, but very little. You get more nutrient reduction, so if nitrogen's an issue in the design, more than likely they would go towards a wet pond. That gets more, it does both. You can get the attenuation and the nutrient reduction on that.
And a wetland is one of the most effective filters of water that you can possibly have. And that's what I was saying, I see these subdivision goes in and they clear off all the old growth vegetation and trees, make a completely bare site, strip the top soil off, and there's not a tree left in these major subdivisions, even after the house is built. You see the little saplings out there. You don't have nearly the purification of water that the, the natural features provided you. I would like to see more designers working around or developers using natural features to help improve the water quality in this county.
Yeah, I would, any other substantive comments? Because I think we've kind of got two things in front of us. We've got, one, enact the ordinance and the date that was prescribed. We have adopt the ordinance with something that is tied to the U D O implementation and effective date, or the third one is we delay acting on it. So I'm ready to entertain the motion tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the proposed revisions of Article 7 Stormwater Management of the Johnston County Land Development Code with an effective date of January 1, 2026, including recodification to move Section 14393 Repairing and Buffer Protection to the separate article of the ordinance.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? I have, I have, I'm going to say very slight heartburn. The hard date of January 1 puts us to have the ordinance done by then, and I think we've talked about having it right rather than rushing it, so.
Should we modify that to coincide with the U D O?
That would be my, and that may be January 1. I mean, based on what we heard today, it very well could be January 1.
I'm good with revising it to.
Do we have?
I have some concern with not having a date certain.
Well, I was about to say, my concern is not having a date, is because I feel like we need to have a date so it knows when to go into effect, and then that way stakeholders know too that this is whenever stuff needs to go into effect and how to plan for it.
And I understand your concern, Mr. Chairman, but from a, from a due process perspective and those sorts of things.
Can we get her a microphone? I make a motion.
He told me, he told me what's coming. It's just because nobody wants me to talk. It's okay. It's okay. But from an implementation and a notice perspective, I do have some concern about not having a date certain. I certainly understand where you're coming from, that we want things to coincide. No pressure, Brastin, but I do, I do have concern about it being a date that is not a date certain.
Let's leave it January 1.
All right, if that's the choice, I, I just, if there's 50/50 chance of getting it on January 1, I don't, I don't know that I'm for January 1. I think February 1 gives us a little more realistic chance of squeezing it in.
I'm concerned because we adopted the land use plan when in July of '22 or '23, and we're several years out, and we still don't have the U D O. It's been kicked down the road a number of times.
I will, I will object to it being kicked down the road. We, we went out for RFQs, we had no responses. Once we got an RFQ and we got responses and we selected, it has moved just as fast as any other U D O. So I object to the thing that we kicked the can down the road on that statement.
Well, that's my opinion, but.
Okay, and then that was my opinion on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, but so we have a motion?
But I agree with a date certain.
Okay, and January 1 is.
January 1.
All right, any other discussion?
I tend to agree with you, just with the holidays and everything else, I hate, let's be honest, what's going to happen is there's going to be a mad rush into Brastin and Shandra's office between now and the end of the year to get as much passed as it can before this, this goes into play. And I think an ending of January 30 or February 1 at least takes the, the large block of holidays out of the way that will relieve some of our staff in these areas, that they're going to be asked to review a lot of things, that projects that, as I mentioned before, are already under contract, have been under contract, are coming to fruition, and now, you know, we're going to hit some hard dates that I think are going to make some differences. And I just feel like January 1, I'm not trying to kick a can in any shape, form, or fashion, but I do feel like putting it at the very end of the year, beginning of the year, there's enough that staff is already dealing with coming through holidays, so I would be. I'd rather do January, January 1, because, I mean, Shandra did this presentation in February, so we saw the proposed changes in February, and there's been plenty of stakeholder meetings, so I'm good with January 1.
And the staff was November 1.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to adopt it and make the effective date January 1, 2026, please say aye.
Aye.
Could you raise your hand? All right, those opposed? No?
Oh, okay, I was confused. I'm sorry, I didn't know there was another option.
So January 1 is, is the motion? So is the voting going to start on January 1, so?
I recant my vote, please.
Okay, so let's try that one more time. So the motion is to make it effective January 1, 2026. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand, yeah, let's raise your hand. So, all right, all those opposed? All right, motion passes four to three. All right, the next item, Shandra, I believe you have it as well?
I do, this one's easier.
Okay.
U S Highway 301 Noose River Bridge Replacement Project. DOT has this project under design, and I think it's a design-build project. Some utilities are already being relocated. We have asked DOT to upsize our existing water main that crosses that bridge when they replace the bridge, so we've asked them to upsize it from a 16-inch to a 36-inch water main. This is consistent with our capital improvements plan that's already been adopted by the board. That size is needed long-term, because we're asking for a betterment. The county is responsible for that betterment cost. We're responsible for the cost difference from the 16 to the 36-inch. The proposed expense is $2,148,681.28. This is the estimate provided by N C D O T. I'm requesting the board adopt a capital project budget for this expense and revenue to be from the water system development fees. This will allow us to proceed with execution of the betterment agreement with N C D O T. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. Did we ever have an estimate of cost from them without the betterment?
I do not know that off the top of my head. I am sorry, I have not provided that. I can't.
I just wonder if it's that much more expensive to put in a 36 as opposed to 16?
Well, because it's being suspended from the bridge, it required additional improvements, structural improvements on the bridge.
Yeah.
That was the big increase in the cost. It's not just the upsize pipeline, required bridge, structural reinforcement had to change quite a bit on the bridge.
Every, every foot is 53 gallons of water.
It's eight pounds a gallon, plus the pipe, plus the pipe weight.
Eight point three, four pounds per gallon.
Okay.
Hey, we're only, just for clarification, we're just paying for the upsize part of it. DOT is paying for the project. We're just asking them to upsize it to the 36 for future.
That's correct.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the capital project budget for the U S 301 Noose River Bridge Replacement Water Main Betterment Agreement with North Carolina DOT.
A second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we had some appointments early this morning on our consent agenda. We have four boards that have more applicants than we have positions open. They are the Bentonville Community Building Board of Trustees, has two positions and three applicants. The I-95, I-40 Crossroad of America Economic Development Alliance has one position with two applicants. The Voluntary Ag District Advisory Board has two positions with four applicants, and the Johnson Lee Harnett Community Action has one position with three applicants. There are ballots at each one of the commissioners' seats. If you would fill those out and turn those in to the clerk, we will make that announcement at the beginning of our six o'clock meeting. And with that, I will turn it over to Jocelyn Andrews, our Tax Administrator, for the delinquent tax collection report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Before you, you have the July collections report. As you can see already, we had not mailed out bills at the end of the month, and we had already received over $566,000 in payments. That just kind of goes back to what I was saying last month, that some people choose to pay over the whole year, and that is something with our new vendor that we have tried to make it much easier for those to do this year. They can, you know, they can pay partial by either online, by phone, or make arrangements coming into office, either way. I did want to make another point as it relates to our new vendor. As mentioned last month, and like I said, the bills had not mailed whenever I was here last month, but about mid-month or so, our vendor sent out an email to about 75,000-plus of our citizens in this county. And that email is just one of the things that they will be doing. This email basically informed people that were already registered with DMV, so it's the same vendor that does both. So in other words, if you go online through the DMV system and make a payment. So in other words, if you go online through the DMV system and make a payment to either renew your tags on your vehicle or renew your driver's license, you're already set up with that system. You already have a profile with them. That email is online there. They basically took that account, all those individuals who have those accounts, and if you, they didn't know if they had property or not in Johnston County, so they did a mass mailing or emailing of all individuals who they believed might have property in this county, just to tell them that the bills are here and here's how you can pay. So you're already, if you're already set up for that, it just makes it easier to pay your property taxes with that. I came back and I told the vendor, I said, but I didn't get one of those. And I'm set up with DMV, and they're like, because you've already been in the system. So if you're already set up with your property taxes in that new payment system, you wouldn't have gotten that email, but you will be getting future emails through that system about reminding when, the end of the year, if you've not paid yet, that it's coming close to the due date and that type of thing. So a lot of benefits come in with that new system. So again, this is a July collection report for you, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Can y'all differentiate if it's sent in by a mortgage servicer?
We do not. We do not have that information at all. We have people all the time because we send tax bills to property owners, okay? We get calls after we send them, and we get them throughout the year saying, but you need to tell my mortgage company. Well, we don't know if you have a mortgage or not. The mortgage companies go to our website, there's a file that they, they use, and they determine which of their properties they have a lien on, and they make those mortgage payments to us, usually between the end, middle to end of October till around December 1st.
So they're not usually part of this early payment?
They are not.
Okay.
They are not.
That was the last possible.
That is correct. They're still collecting their money to make that payments, yes. Yes.
All right, any other questions? All right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, manager reports and comments?
Morning, Chairman, Board members. The, I mentioned, I think, the last board meeting about the Golden Leaf Foundation has a project going on there where counties in the area can apply for grants on behalf of certain project. And it gives a lot of responsibility to the county manager to review the applications and then submit them to Golden Leaf. We've had one from the Johnston County Economic Development nonprofit for some expansion out there for, related to workforce development, sort of an addition to the current Workforce Development Center. We've had an application from Two Chambers Commerce. So all that information is due next Monday by noon, so I'll be evaluating that. I'll probably reach out and just discuss that individually, some of my thoughts on that, but there's still some more work to be done on that, so just wanted to update you on that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner Godwin, I'll start with you.
I wish you'd have started with anybody else today but me.
I'll end with you tonight, how about that?
That's fine, that's fine. Maybe I have something meaningful and profound by tonight. You know, I've been on this board for a long time now, and it doesn't get easier. You know, I was thinking back when I was, the Fire Service, we recognized earlier today, when I was a young man in the early 60s, that's when most of these fire departments got started, late 50s, early 60s. And it started to, we're having barn fires, tobacco barn fires. That's where most of them go, and that was most of the fires they fought was tobacco barns. And of course, that's changed so much now. We have so many fine volunteers, men and women, and it's evolved to where we've got a quarter of a million people now, two interstates, three interstates coming. And a lot of their cause is traffic accidents and that sort of thing. It's just a different county now. There's a lot going on. I serve with a good board, and I appreciate all of you. I know we have a difference of opinion, we had it today, but we get through it. And we are representative form of government. If it were a straight democracy, most of the people in this county would vote to do away with developers and builders. You know, they're here, they've got their house, but we are representative, and it's up to us to serve all the people as the best of our ability. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Mr. DeWolff?
Chairman, first of all, I want to apologize for my comments earlier about the U D O process. It was not necessarily that timeline. It's when we began it, or we had the opportunity to begin it, because I served on that land use Citizens Advisory Committee. And we, we as well as staff tended to report to other sort of commissioners at that time. And if I recall correctly, I think it was the better part of the year before we actually saw approval of that plan, which then gave us the opportunity to begin soliciting for somebody to help us do the U D O update. And there was a lot of frustration on part of myself and many others who served on that committee, that they, they felt like that the, some of the commissioners at that time really were not, I guess enthusiastic about moving forward these changes. We're now doing that, and we've got a good U D O, I think, that's going to be in place. But unfortunately, the General Assembly has passed some, some provisions that make it problematic, the prohibition of downzoning, it's going to make it problematic. I hope that's going to be resolved by the next session. But there was frustration that there was a sentiment by some commissioners who are no longer on the board not to move this thing forward. And that delayed the process to get the U D O going, in my opinion. So my apologies if I offended you about how long it's taken on U D O processes, taking the appropriate amount of time once it was allowed to get started.
Now, I don't disagree with that. I think on the land use plan, I think there's not anybody who was here then that felt like that process took longer than it did. But once we got through that, I know there was some, you know, we had a hard time finding a consultant, and I don't think that's something we could have put on the staff to try to do in addition to their other responsibilities. But I agree, once we got to the point of getting some responses and selecting, we've moved at a reasonable pace. But getting to that land use completion and adoption was painful.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
I was going to say that it was really great being able to attend the Association of County Commissioners last week. I know I was only there for one day, but it was really neat being able to see what other counties are doing across the state. And again, echoing some of Ms. Commissioner Godwin's echoes of just being proud to serve on this board and all the things that we're doing. And also, I did want to shout out that next Thursday on September 11th, JOCO grows is doing a P U V workshop where our wonderful Ms. Jocelyn is going to be helping moderate that. And so if anyone has any land that they own in the county and it questions with all the new assessments that went out and tax bills that have just gone out, if they have any questions on how to enroll their farmland or any land that they own in the P U V deferment program, this is, there will be a meal, so they are asking people to register. But I'm excited for this as a way to help the citizens in the county with any questions that they might have about the P U V program here in the county. And thank you for Ms. Jocelyn for helping moderate that.
All right, Commissioner Stevens?
I just want to echo what Ted and several others, or excuse me, Commissioner Godwin and several others said this morning. I too really appreciate the open conversation that we can have on this board, knowing that at the end of the day, we represent the county as a whole, and we truly want what's best for the county all the way around. And we know sometimes that comes with making difficult decisions. And I just appreciate the openness. I appreciate everybody that came today to speak that had an opinion. And I just want to, I'm going to put Adam, our P I O officer, on the spot. I want to make sure that everybody knows how to contact the commissioners, how to keep up with what's going on in the county. I think it's really important that we continue to have this dialogue. Our county is moving fast. It is growing fast. And, you know, to Commissioner DeWolff's point earlier, when we have some, some rules and ordinances that are 30-plus years old, we, it does feel to, to myself and others that we're making, you know, large pendulum swings in one direction or the other. And I think it's important that we keep a lot of this dialogue going so that what, the decisions that we're making have input from not only the constituents that it'll be affecting, but other people in the county that are, that are also affected. And so I would love if Adam, our P I O, would talk a little bit about the best places to get information. And I would like to welcome anybody watching or attending to reach out in any and all ways because we're not just seeing it in this instance. You know, for instance, the Conference of Land Use Plan, to your point, we've been working on for years. We specifically, each commissioner asked that the public come out and tell us what you wanted to see, and we hosted it in every district. And unfortunately, the most people we had attend in any given district, I think, was eight. And I mean, I appreciate that, I guess, how do we get it out there more to the citizens that we want to hear from them? We want the opinions, we want the dialogue back and forth. How, which ways are we and how can we be better at it?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great point. Commissioner Stevens in there, they're quoting again. So we, the best way to get our information from Johnston County is to visit johnstonnc.gov. That is where you will find all of our archived information, our latest news notices, our press releases. You also find meeting minutes that date very far back, Board of Commissioner meetings for past 30 years, you can find on our website. Social media is another great place to, to find us, and that's going to be Facebook, X, Instagram, LinkedIn, and YouTube. And these meetings are live streamed on YouTube. They're also archived on YouTube, so you can go back and you can find the meetings, skim through them, and they're also subtitled and captioned. So you can, you can scrub through and find the section that you, you want to find that that might pertain to a topic that, that you're interested in. So those are, those are two of the biggest ways. But also signing up for press releases, you can do that on our website as well. Again, that's johnstonnc.gov. And Emergency Services has a great program called JOCO Alerts that I'm sure a lot of you have signed up for, where you get emergency alerts through Johnston County. So there's a lot of information out there, and there's a lot of ways to contact us. I think to, to answer your other question, the way we can do a better job is not everybody's online and not everybody is on social media. So that's one thing we really want to look at this year is, is getting, getting to, to a grassroots form of communication where we can get to civic organizations, churches, wherever it may be, to reach people where they are. And I think that's, that's a, my colleagues and myself ask each other that question all the time about how do you get people interested in local government? And it is, it is a very challenging, challenging thing to do. Everybody's interested in federal government and to a certain extent, state government. But when you get down to the local levels, you, you start losing interest sometimes. And I, I think, and as you all know, local, local governments where is the closest to the people. So that's, we definitely encourage everyone to, to get involved and to follow us in any way, shape, or form you can.
Okay, thank you. I just know my business marketing is, is trying to get in front of as many people as possible, as often as possible. And I know for a specific, I think, Dana, if I'm not wrong, we call it the Sunshine List that you can, you can subscribe to that gets, it makes sure of every agenda, every meeting, et cetera. And so, like I said, I just feel like it's a continuous theme that we're hearing a lot of, is that there's either, they don't know where to find the information or where to connect. And I know there's a lot of places, and so maybe we can just try to be more direct. And then just letting people know that you can literally email us at all at one time. We have a new email address that hits us all at, at one time. So I just want to make sure we were.
You want to say that email, email address?
It's commissioners@johnstonnc.gov.
Yep.
Good job.
Thanks.
All right, Commissioner Rose?
All right, wanted to correct Commissioner Stevens on one thing. I had 15 at my U D O meeting, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. His was the most qualitative.
District 3 rocks, but anyway. Also, I wanted to piggyback off of what Michelle said. I was able to attend the Commissioners Conference last, about a week and a half ago, and it was, it was really a good experience to meet some commissioners from other counties. And it reaffirms that I think that we are on the right track in Johnston County, and we have a really good board. And I was also, I'm sure I'm stealing a little bit of the thunder for the next couple comments.
I had a long list, so you just went off of it.
But yeah, I was really proud to see our, our chairman and vice chair present at, at that convention, and they did a great job. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, very few times that we get on social media and see positive things. But after the last vote on system development fees, I didn't see a lot of comments, but they were all positive. And I was glad to see that, that anytime you raise fees, people are generally negative. But I think the, the understanding of why these fees had to be there in place so that new water sources can be developed for our future and our county to be able to, to grow in a responsible way without raising the rates of our existing citizens, I think, was understood by these commenters, and, and that was refreshing to see.
My Chairman Harris?
Yes, sir, thank you. I, back to Commissioner Stevens' talk about the public information, I would encourage people to, to reach out. I mean, this, this board is in the community. I mean, we're, we're out there with you, we live here with you. You know, I answer my phone when you call, so I mean, it's not, we're not way off in a, in a ivory tower somewhere. I mean, we're out there with you to, to listen to you because this seat belongs to the people. It's not mine, I just get to sit in it for a brief amount of time. And we want to serve what's best for the county, the long-term interest of the overall county. And these decisions sometimes are very tough. There's, there's pros and cons to all of them, and we try to weigh that out and what's going to have the most positive effect on the citizens long-term in the county, and that's what we try to do. On the conference, we, we, as Commissioner, um.
Rose.
Do what?
Rose.
Rose, yeah, I know who you are. Commissioner Rose started talking about, the chairman and I were asked to present on the Fire Service changes that we've made here in the county. And it was really, it was really an interesting time. It was like a blur because we packed a lot of information into about an hour or so presentation. And the chairman did a great job. We all, we kind of tag teamed the whole process. But you know, the, and I was honored and thankful to be asked to do that. But the, the credit really goes to the Fire Service people here in the county. You know, all the chiefs and the people that, who have worked so diligently to get this program off the, you know, we, we got to go present it to the other county commissioners around the state, and there is a lot of interest in what we're doing in Johnston County, all over North Carolina. I think we're going to have a road crew to have to go travel around and present to all these different places because we're getting a lot of invitations. I got a text this morning before this meeting started from the city manager in Weaverville up in the mountains, and he's, he's wanting a copy of the presentation and know more information about it. So, you know, we're thankful for that, but I, I got to give the credit where the credit is due, and that's, you know, Chief Ellington and Chief Stanley and all the other chiefs that were involved in the Fire Commission and the working of the Fire Matrix and all the different people that came together that really made this thing work. And so I'm thankful for those folks and their dedication, and it was an honor to get to go present the information, the lessons that we've learned. And we're already hearing that Nash County is making some changes because we went up there and did a presentation for them as well. So, you know, anything we can do to help them, we're, we're happy to do that, so. But I'm grateful for this board, and you also learn at those conferences that everything may not work as well as it does here in Johnston County. We're, we're very blessed and very fortunate to have a, a great group of people to work with and a great group of citizens that live here that love the, love this county and love the, the lifestyle that we have, and we're, we're very fortunate. So you get to see that a lot when you hear all the stories from all over North Carolina from the different people, so. But that's it. Thank you, everyone, with long.
All right, goodness, I have several things. One, I'll start with the association meeting. I did want to say I had an opportunity to go to lunch with our Johnston County Representatives of Youth Voice, Kayla from Boys and Girls Club, and then also Ellie from 4H. And outstanding young ladies, as we got to see when they came and both spoke to us. I was the adopted commissioner for Kimber from Iredale County, so that was, she was a pleasure to, to meet and sit down and talk with. But Johnston County is in good hands. It's always impressive, and it's never failed, that the, the young folks that we have attend those meetings are impressive, their willingness and ability to get up and, and speak to others. It amazes me because I know I was not there in high school, but just wanted to recognize them and their leaders and thank them for, for what they do. At your seat at our Central Pines Regional Council, we had a little pre-meeting workshop that we started doing, and Byron McAllister, the mayor of Sal, and I were there to talk about issues and relationships between commissioners, our county government and, and local government. And had a gentleman from Holly Springs who provided some information on their water resource management plan. It sounds something similar to what we were talking about trying to move to, so I haven't digested the whole thing, but I ask our counselor to look up and make sure I got the right things, if you want to take a look at that for the directions we're heading. I did a couple of interesting comments from today's meeting, and, and I, I know that we selected. I did a couple of interesting comments from today's meeting, and I know that we selected the date of January 1st for implementation of the stormwater rules. And I just wanted to separate, did not, not to imply that we expect the UDO to be done on that exact same date, so that we were talking about stormwater rules. And then to point out on the differences in the board, I don't think the difference was should it be implemented, it was a matter of is it January the 1st or February the 1st? So we were arguing over, I'll say arguing, I was arguing over which, you know, which is it January or February? So it's not like, it was a tremendous chasm that we had there, it was a matter of which month does it start in? So the other thing that Mr. Lipscomb, I heard, mentioned is staff for stormwater, and I think that's something that this board has been on for over a year now, and to continue to make sure that we have staff that we need. And with this coming up, that gives us three months, four months, to make sure we have the right staff to review the plans, and I'm going to provide the training that we need for that. And the other piece of that was, I think that it would be helpful for this board, and I'm going to look to the development community for this too, to provide some information on the cost of what we're talking about. We heard eight to $25,000 a lot, or whatever, to make sure we understand the impact we're having on housing affordability. Again, I think that there's not any argument from this board that we need to do better. With plenty of pictures we get sent with stormwater, you know, coming off development onto somebody else's property. So just some mechanism that we can do that evaluation in-house, and if that's hiring an outside consultant that may not practice in Johnston County, but somebody take a look at that so we can be an informed board. And again, as we routinely have talked about, you know, it will not take 10 years to upgrade plans, and I think in other plans, we've talked about it, looking at at least five years, but to make sure we're current and not really behind the eight ball on trying to react to things as has been done in the past. Let's see. And the last thing I kind of touched on, but is this board's passion? I mean, I think that there are things that get my blood boiling, and I'm passionate about, most of those are engineering, but I think that you will see that each one of the board members do have things that are important to them, and they express those opinions, I think, fairly, clearly. And I just want to know, I appreciate that, and I hope you appreciate my momentary, as I said, be the, I want to be the thermostat, not the thermometer, but occasionally I become the thermometer and try to get that back. But thank you for your showing me the grace in that, I do appreciate that. With that, that's all that I have. We do have a need to go into closed session, do not anticipate any action to be taken after that, so entertain a motion.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move the board to go into closed session for the purposes of consulting with an attorney employed by the board in order to preserve attorney-client privilege pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1183, and to establish or instruct staff concerning the negotiation and price and terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.1185.
One second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go into closed session after.